All the regular meeting for March fifth, twenty twenty five, Toledo City Council order. First item is the.
I would just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, a defender God, an individual, a liberty, and that's the story. There we go.
One nation in the covered.
That's what I said.
No stopping.
I wasn't gonna say that.
Never since.
You take a roll call? Counselor Kaufman? Counselor Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Mix?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Right here.
Once you're peed in.
Yes, sir.
Counsel President Bush? I'm here.
What can we read on this?
So I have one, my one addition that I'm going to do now to the agenda. It's a city of Toledo proclamation. March fifth, twenty twenty five. Kobe Coxon Day. Whereas Kobe Coxon has been an integral part of Toledo athletics for many years. And whereas Kobe Coxon had to come back from a devastating injury suffered during his senior football season. And whereas Kobe Coxon is a four time state wrestling place, if a feat only accomplished once before in Toledo history. Whereas Kobe Coxon had to face his nemesis that defeated him the previous year. And where, and whereas he overcame all to win the twenty twenty five O S A A two A one A two hundred and eighty five pound championship by defeating his nemesis by fall. In the final at one oh one of the first round. Now therefore be it resolved, I Mayor Rod Cross, City of Toledo, do hereby proclaim March fifth, twenty twenty five as Kobe Coxon Day. I invite everyone to congratulate Kobe and enjoy this momentous occasion with him and his family and teammates. Signed by myself on this day, March fifth, twenty twenty five. Next item, visitors' public comments. Is there anyone that would like to address something that's not on our agenda this evening?
There is anyone online who would like to speak to the council, please raise your hand electronically and you will be recognized. There are no entries.
Next item is consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the work session held September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. The executive session held January twenty second, twenty twenty five, and the special meeting held January twenty third, twenty twenty five.
The motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Been moved by Frank, seconded by Tracy to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the work session held September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. The executive session held January twenty second, twenty twenty five, and the special meeting held January twenty third, twenty twenty five. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Kaufman?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Right, yeah.
Counselor Keating?
Yes.
Counsel President Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Mix?
Yes.
Counselor Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
And I vote yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next item, discussion decision items. Number one, approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Chinook Library Network. Harrison?
Yes, uh, this is now. Happening on the tenth, so we're just about there. Um. So some of you who use our local libraries will know. The Lincoln County Library District split across two resource sharing networks back in twenty twelve. So basically, even though we're all in the same library district. We are on two separate networks. That's two separate catalogs, two separate cards, two separate patron pools. So if currently and for the last several years, if you want a card and it's good for every library in the county, you would need two cards. So we're going back to. Coming back together after what's colloquially colloquially referred to as the divorce that happened in twenty twelve when Newport, Driftwood, and Tillamook County split off. Due to the work of all constituent libraries and especially our current and former district directors. Now the remarriage is happening and we're all looking forward to it. So this intergovernmental agreement is just to. Have all parties acknowledge the situation moving forward. So we're not moving, we're not changing, except that our resource access is expanding. But it's ocean books. The other side of the network is coming back into Chinook, which we're already in. So that's, that's the background there and we are going live on Monday, the tenth, when Toledo was closed. So we will get to find out what happened the next day. Although I'll be watching my phone to see, uh, you know, as they're working out those first, first day bucks. But it's, they've been working really hard in making that a smooth transition. So that's, that's the background on this.
Hey, that sounds good.
Any questions, counsel?
Yeah, so this is what you were talking about, you know, a week or two ago, where one card will be able to be used at all libraries now?
Yeah, so the, the most recent thing I heard since the last meeting is it, it looks like we will be defaulting to your municipality. Nearest your residence for what card we merge it to. So a lot of folks have dual cards. So if you've got a Lincoln City card and a Walport card or a Newport card and a Toledo card, the town you live in or closest to will be the one that we merge your cards into. So all your, your stuff will, will merge. You won't be losing one, but that card will then be good for both at all. So every library in Lincoln County and Tillamook County, um, you'll have one card and you can browse all our catalogs as one. And you can get items sent from any of those libraries to your own via the courier who runs every day. And it's not an interlibrary loan. You don't have to go through a process. We just click it and it gets sent.
So if somebody gets a book here in Toledo, say, and then they return it in Lincoln City, is it still gonna be in the system as returned now?
Okay. Yeah, so that, um, uh, yeah, the council is referring to, uh, I believe is before you could return like a Toledo book in Newport. Right? But because they don't see our part of the system, it would go in the courier, but if you say return to Newport on Friday. All they can do is put it in the bin. And so it wouldn't be checked in until it got back to us who have I L S, who have the catalog to check it in. So now if you borrow a book in Toledo and you drive up to Lincoln City and you throw it in the book drop, as soon as it hits the scanner, it'll be checked in at Lincoln City.
Makes it a lot easier for people.
This includes the Community College Library too, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we've got Plaxton Community College, Post Community College, Tillamook Bay Community College. And they, they've been on our network and then we're, you know, we're sucking up Tillamook County too.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Harrison, bring back Bondman, that's gonna say. Would entertain a motion?
I'm going to approve an intergovernmental agreement establishing Toledo's participation in the Chinook Library Network and authorize Mayor Cross to sign and execute the agreement. I second it.
Been moved by Tracy, seconded by Kim. Approve an intergovernmental agreement establishing Toledo's patient's Chinook Library Network and authorize Mayor Cross to sign and execute the agreement. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Kaufman?
Yes.
Counselor Sylvia? Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Key?
Yes.
Counsel President Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Mix?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries seven zero. Good job, Harrison.
Thank you.
Next item, resolution number.
Might as well stay up here.
Yep.
Is this where we get to steal some more library funds?
You shouldn't even joke about that now.
You don't understand.
Books already blowing up.
You don't understand. This is going back to the last money we appropriated for them. Somebody said we stole their money.
I know.
And it had to be explained that we have to do this because of budget. But it just goes directly to the marks.
So our next item is resolution number fifteen sixty eight, resolution recognizing grant revenue and making appropriations for spending for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
Hi Harrison. Hi, I'll turn around. There we go. I left and I'm back. This is our ready to read grant. Comes from the State Library. This is, um, just an annual grant cycle. It's one of the ways that our State Library supports local libraries, um, with this grant to support summer reading and literacy programs. So this is part of our, um, our, uh, usual round of funding that we, we seek out for supporting summer reading. There's a lot of paraphernalia that goes along with that. We've got the T-shirts, we've got the bags, we've got programs, we've got, uh, performers to pay and all of that. So it's, it's an important thing. It's a cool thing and, um, we got it for another year.
And you guys are increasing your numbers every year, right? I mean, that's just been a.
Yeah, we've been on a steady increase and we're hoping to do that a lot more now that. Apart from just the, uh, resource sharing network reintegration, we are trying to. Collaborate more as libraries because every library does have different things. They specialize in different collections, different programs, different communities.
Different axolotls.
Different axolotls. Driftwood has the best, perhaps only axolotls in the library district. And, um, so we really are trying to. Get people circulating through the different libraries up to see everything that each library offers. So we're hoping to mutually increase our participation in the district for summer reading and to be on top.
That's a good question. As the attorney, what's an axolotl?
I'm disappointed. My, it's, it's a kind of salamander. Yeah, that's got brills and actually axolotl is the wrong pronunciation. If you look at the native pronunciation from like South America or wherever they're from.
It's my model, right?
It's like totally pronounced different. Yeah, but we white people butcher it.
They're extinct.
Or something like that.
They're extinct where they're from because the body of waters that they originated in no longer exists.
I'm still disappointed. But they're really.
Really cool. They're cool critters.
They, they've been like a hot kid interest animal for years now with books and cartoons and.
We used to sell them at the pet store here in town.
So it's a big draw for the library.
Isn't the thing one's name?
The what's that?
The thing one's name is honey.
I haven't actually met Driftwood's axolotls.
I, I, I get their Instagram and they, yeah.
I move to adopt resolution number fifteen sixty eight, resolution to the Toledo City Council recognizing grant revenue and making appropriations for spending for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
It's been moved by Andrew, seconded by Kim to adopt resolution number fifteen sixty eight, a resolution of Toledo City Council recognizing grant revenue and making appropriations for spending for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. I'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Kaufman?
Yes.
Counselor Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Mix?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes, please.
Counsel President Bush?
Yes.
Counsel Keating?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next item, decision to approve a contract to appoint a city manager pro temp.
Mayor Council. Um, this is a follow up to council conversations on February nineteenth and February twenty sixth. Candidates for the position interviewed on February twenty sixth and the council selected David Klein and delegated authority. For me to negotiate a contract with him. Um, at the time this council request forum was prepared, the contract had not been finalized. At this point, I'm, all of council is tracking what's in the contract. And, um, all I will, um. Add there's a residency requirement, the, um. Interim is being paid a little bit. Less than what the prior city manager was getting paid if you calculated first health insurance. And, and then there's also a stipend on top of that that's being paid. Monthly for housing. And I think, uh. Think that's at least a good big picture overview. Are there any questions?
I have one. Can we give him a cheer if it doesn't squeak?
We can.
Oh, wow.
We'll, we'll find a way.
And find us too. We would.
We hope so then.
Yeah. And then just for some clarity, just that it said while we're on the public meeting that, um, the expectation is that David would be starting on Monday.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve a contract to appoint David Klein as the city manager pro temp and authorize Mayor Cross to sign and execute the contract.
Second, yes.
It's been moved by Frank, seconded by Kim to approve a contract to appoint David Klein as the city manager pro temp, authorize Mayor Cross to sign and execute the contract. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Kaufman?
Yes.
Counselor Mix?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes, please.
Counselor Keating?
Yes.
Counsel President Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
And I vote yes. Motion carries seven zero. Welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you so very much. I am really.
I hope you feel that way in a week. Or two. Otherwise, probably stat.
I love challenges.
I'll remember that.
And with that, we now move into reports and comments. Lisa, do you have anything?
Um, just a quick update. Next week is your joint meeting with the planning commission that will begin at six o'clock here in the council chambers.
Six P M? Yes.
Six P M, Wednesday, the twelfth.
Any questions for Lisa?
Will there be snacks? I'm not sure. I am not in charge of planning. It's just me.
Yeah, you gotta hit a party.
Chief Pace? Uh, we were hoping to do a transition today and it didn't work out, so we're working for, uh, transition of March twelfth.
Technical difficulties, as I understand.
Technical difficulties beyond the control of. We don't need assistance.
Say anybody.
Definitely.
Did you get back to, uh, the background checks on the applicants that you've been holding on to?
No. It took a while.
Do you make?
Because for those positions. Let's just say I've had four of those procedures. We'll just leave it at that.
How long do they take?
You should help a month.
How many?
About a month or two. Yeah.
Wow.
Any questions for Chief Pace? Harrison, don't you think nude ass?
In general, it's a.
Yep.
We didn't make any videos.
Cause he's sitting next to another guy.
Okay, right here.
Well, let's call his name's a mic.
So, uh. Yeah, we've, uh, we've got a lot going on. Um, we've got a full dance card these days, which is great. So check out the website, check out the newsletter. Tomorrow night, Thursday at six P M, I'll be doing an email basics class as part of our digital literacy series. Um, and our new night for Dungeons and Dragons group will be Saturday evenings and we have to expand.
Do you have time?
That, um, it runs four to seven. Uh, right now we're running a, uh, we've got one, one table that's, that's filling up pretty good. But we're looking to add a D M. That just is a matter of finding new volunteers with experience.
Any of that Dungeon Master. Dungeon Master.
Do they have to come with their own cards?
I've never played. Okay.
I have no idea.
It's, uh, the, the, the supplies are there. It's dice.
Oh.
And we've got everything. We've got our D M has passed.
Even for new people that haven't played, cause my kid knows.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be.
Good.
Beginner friendly and we're, we're hoping to expand and have more people going, but that's down the road. We've got a, got a weekly session going.
Thank you.
That's every week on Saturday now?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Back in the eighties, those were the tall seasons.
Right, is, uh, Chief Robison online?
He's at conference. Thank you, Harrison.
Thank you. Yeah, he, he's at a conference.
Okay. Is, um.
I'm.
Brian online?
He's at a conference.
He's at a conference as well.
All right, Mike?
Um, I hope to, uh. Have a property line. Adjustment declaration, some deeds and a couple ordinances that. Need to work on tomorrow. To get to you and one is, uh. Related to a distance with. Chickens and livestock, livestock and our lean suggested maybe we just even remove the, the distance requirement. But I, I, I need to look at it and, um, the other is, um. Lost it. There, there's, there's another fairly, oh, it's the parking.
You knew what I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions for Mike? For those of you that are curious, the, what I'm talking about is we, um, are going to do an ordinance so that you can have residential parking permits.
That, that's great.
Just saying.
Yeah. Just saying really good.
Are they applying to control this parking perhaps? Will that be our ordinance officer or will the regular police be expected to give that?
I think it'd be.
It would be code enforcement.
Sounds like code enforcement.
It's gonna be busy.
He only has so many hours.
Go to council comments. Start with Jackie this time. Burns.
I, I was looking at her.
I, I don't really have anything, but I, I, I do have a question. So on this road that I live on, some of the houses are Lincoln County, some are Toledo. How do I get the ones that are Lincoln County to come into Toledo? Is there, is there a?
What road do you live on?
Wagon Road.
Sorry, there's any possible way that that's gonna be able to happen?
Well, it's just, you know, there's, there's one house that is, is a real.
That's been a problem since two thousand fifty.
And it's county and so there's, anyway, so is there a procedure to get?
There is.
And what is it? How does it find? You want them to join the county so you can complain about them and make them.
No, I want the county to, the houses that are county to be incorporated into the city.
Normally if you're adjoining, if you're an adjoining prop, if your property adjoins the city limits.
Oh, yeah.
Or that joins another property and you get them that their property adjoins the city limits, you can annex.
That's, that's.
But the problem with. Way back when the roads weren't deeded to, my recollection and granted, I'm thinking nine, I'm thinking back to. November, December, two thousand fifteen, some, somewhere in there, early sixteen. My recollection is they were deeded for public use, but not deeded to. The, um, city, not dated to the county. And it's kind of a paper.
So they're just.
Paper roads. So they're just limbo roads.
Nice.
Um.
That's great.
To, to give you an even farther back history, wagon road and the entirety of wagon road, so all three sections of wagon road. Plus the homes that are on either side of wagon road have been an issue for over twenty five years. Because of two things. One, back in the day, um. So when you hook up the city water and city sewer. There's supposed to be a deed restriction put on when you're outside, outside the city limits, that when you become adjacent to the city, you will, and you will self annex into the city. Unfortunately, a lot of those covenants were not recorded. And so they don't. So the only other thing that is left open to the city is forced annexation and nobody wants to go down that road.
What's that look like?
We tell them we're going to annex you and then we have a vote of the people.
Looks like here's the city limits and here's all these properties and you pick a geographic area.
Valid issue there. Oh, forget it.
You, you have the, I think it would require a vote of everybody in the area being annexed as well as everybody approved by everybody in the city.
Exactly. I, is, is how I believe that would.
But free you being on council, we made a group to do a housing evaluation of Toledo. And they came and presented to us and the, the thing that stuck out in my mind is they said Toledo is the weirdest town ever. Truly. Um, they're out of Portland have done hundreds if not thousands of these housing evaluations and said Toledo has no buildable land. It's the weirdest thing we've ever seen. It's either too steep to be considered buildable because it's prohibitively expensive or it's swamp. And so they proposed that we flipped some of our in the city land that's not buildable with county land outside and changing the borders of our city. So we could have more buildable land. So I think we were supposed to actually talk about that this year.
Yeah, that's.
So we might be able to do your thing along with.
So that, that's going to be something that we need to bring up next week at the joint meeting with the planning commission, then to start looking at.
Okay.
So if you go to our website, look up the buildable lands inventory.
Okay.
And follow that with the housing needs analysis. Those are the two things we had done about eighteen months ago.
Okay.
And it was done by a company called Eco Northwest. They're the preeminent folks in the Northwest to do these kinds of things. And at the very first meeting, I think your second sentence was that this is the most topographically challenged city I have ever seen in my life.
It was a goodness. Yeah. And it was just funny, you know?
And that's for anybody else who's interested in, in how, how cities look at this stuff. Go on our website, go to the planning section, look up housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventory. Um, it's a real eye opener and we'll just leave it at that.
But it might get your thing taken. I'll be there. Yeah.
Yeah, just keep our stock.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Andrew?
Yeah, um, my comments tonight are, um. Are directed to our new interim city manager. Really excited to have you come on board. Uh, welcome. You're, you know, a lot of ways, one of us now. Um, and as you can see, that's a unique, um, unique thing to be a part of. One of the things that I would encourage, um, you to consider as you take on the role is that there's also an incredible value to your. Outsider, uh, perspective, um, that you are coming here as a member of an outside community in an interim capacity. We have a lot of challenges that have been identified over these last several months, a lot of areas where we have. As you've seen, our charter has things that have ambiguities. Our policies are lacking in a lot of areas. Um, a lot of the problems that we're facing are just by the nature of our existing city government and our historic city government has. Struggled to define things clearly and to set policies that can be upheld and followed, um, consistently throughout our government. And so having somebody who's an outsider and brings that outsider perspective is of enormous value. Um, and so I would really encourage you to embrace that, um, to recognize the importance of that and to. Help us to think about things that we can do differently as opposed to trying to cling on to things that maybe have not been working for us as well. As, as maybe was intended when some of these, some of these policies, some of these processes were put into place. We could really use you to think about the path forward, not clinging to, you know, the things we've struggled with in the past. Thank you. I'm really excited about the experience that you bring. I just kind of wanted to offer that that is something that I personally see as a great value to your position.
Thank you for that invitation and thank you for the welcome again.
Thank you.
Counselor Kaufman?
She's choking. Nothing.
Yeah, um. Yeah, um, at my last C W A. It was uh, pretty interesting. Um, I'm gonna be, I'm reaching out to a lady by the name of Anna Duffy. She's a community outreach coordinator through C W A or through the uh, com. About, it's called a get there. It helps people get rides to and from uh, bus, car pulling, stuff like that. And it works throughout Lincoln County, Benton County, Lynn County. Um, they even have an emergency ride home. If you're stuck and screwed, they'll come and pick you up and take you directly home.
Wow.
Um, the other thing that I was unaware of, apparently my wife was, but I wasn't. Um, is this other thing that they have is uh, I'm gonna be getting slides for this uh, probably in two weeks. I gotta get them to Lisa. About a service that's available here. It's called the Ride Line and they do wheelchair stretcher mileage reimbursement, meal reimbursement, lodging. Uh, they have a whole list of things that they will help you with. All you have to do is sign up. Dental, grocery shopping, all nine yards. So I'll be doing a slide probably in two weeks to get more information on. So our community members are actually aware of this, because I've talked to a few that have no idea. They take care of mental health, behavior appointments and everything that people are struggling to get to. So we need to try and see if we, and Lisa was even suggesting possibly getting certain slides added to the website with information so they can access it that way.
Good.
That's all I got.
Good job, Johnny. Good job. Yeah.
Tracy?
I don't have to thank you today.
I've got a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to publicly apologize to Counselor Key. For last week.
I appreciate that and I also apologize for my contributions to the. That's straight.
I love you guys.
Stick a jistamake.
I too, wanna welcome David on board. We'll see a lot of each other next week, so. Try to help you get up to speed, know, learn, learn a little bit of history. Simply from the, I I can at least point out some landmines before you go charging into a room. So hopefully we can get get this off on Monday on a good foot and and start getting us back where we need to be. On track and serving our citizens in the best way possible. And I I tell you what, I gotta tip my hat to Cindy up in finance. She's currently doing the work of at least two. I would, I'm guessing two and a half. And. I think that uh. Think we need to to consider doing something special for our employees this year, not just a normal party. Like us all to take that into account as a council. Not and not necessarily put that on David's shoulders. So. And with that, we're adjourned.
It's okay. I didn't have any.
Oh, no, council president.
Haven't anything. The only thing I was gonna say is. Thank you for your comment on this. I only heard about it from Ron because I don't have Facebook, but. Um, Olala Lake is going to be closed this summer because G P is needing to do a bunch of work on it. And it sounds like people were really upset because they feel very entitled to their local lake and I understand that. I understand, but G P lets us use that lake out of the goodness of their heart and it's private property. And I'm so appreciative that they do that and they have to close the lake for the summer. It's a grass, but I understand.
But it's also to mitigate fire dangers too, and that's the huge thing that our citizens have to understand.
So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna have to uh, anticipate some blowback from current sectors that are that would be done there, so.
I'm done.
You're good.
I'm good.